Certainly. Chair Morrissey.
Chair.
Vice Chair Malik, I think indicated he was going to be out of the, not be able to attend today. Commissioner Rosales.
Present.
Commissioner Anthony.
Here.
Commissioner Ogden.
Present.
Commissioner Balma.
Present.
And Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
Let the record show that there is a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Sue, are there any matters not on the agenda?
Chair Morrissey, we do not have any tonight.
Okay. I see that we need to have a motion for the approval of the minutes from our prior meeting, which was June 24th.
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Dodds, can we vote?
Let the record show that the motion passes 5-1 with Commissioner Anthony abstaining.
Okay, I see there's no issues or matters on the consent calendar. There's no items on transportation items, so it brings us to our public hearings section. And this format shall consist of an open presentation by city staff and testimony beginning with project applicant owner, testimony from the general public, three minutes, limited to three minutes, and final response from the project applicant, 10 minutes. The first item we have is item four, consideration of two development plans and conditional use permits for construction and operation of two unmanned prefabricated telecommunications equipment shelters. So Shannon, take her away.
Disclosures, sir?
Sorry? Oh, yes, disclosures. Commissioner Dodds.
I'm familiar with the area and read the staff report.
Commissioner Balma.
Very familiar with the area and also read the staff report.
I spoke with Joan Bachmann this morning about the situation and on Oceanside Boulevard and the crossroad leading up to the crossroad. Commissioner Rosales.
Familiar with the area and read the staff report.
Commissioner Ogden.
Yes, I am familiar with the area. I also spoke to Joan Bachmann with Tom Morrissey, and I also spoke to Kevin Bachmann. I normally walk with him on Saturday mornings, and he brought that to my attention. We did have a discussion with Joan more specifically about the concerns that she has and her group Scott. And I am familiar with the area, though.
Commissioner Anthony.
I'm familiar with the area and read the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Shannon, take it away now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chair Morrissey, Planning Commissioners, Shannon Vitale, Senior Planner in the Planning Division. I'm here tonight to discuss Agenda Item Number Four, the construction and operation of two Sci-Fi equipment huts. In May of 2021, following a competitive bid process, Sci-Fi was selected as a provider to install fiber optic infrastructure along the public streets in Oceanside at no cost to the city. The City Council approved a right-of-way agreement with Sci-Fi on May 4th, 2022. This agreement allows Sci-Fi to install fiber optic equipment in the city's right-of-ways and authorizes the use of a portion of up to three city-owned properties. At this time, Sci-Fi has requested the use of two city-owned properties, a portion of the fire training center located at 110 Jones Road and a portion of El Corazon located adjacent to the northwest intersection of Oceanside Boulevard and Town Center Drive. On December 20th, 2023, the City Council approved a property use agreement with Sci-Fi for the use of the fire training center. On June 5th, 2024, the Council approved a property use agreement for the El Corazon location. As described in the staff report, the property use agreement for the El Corazon site includes a provision that requires Sci-Fi to relocate the equipment hut to an alternate location in El Corazon at the end of the initial 30-year contract if deemed necessary by the city. Here's a map showing the two city-owned locations that were approved by the City Council. The location of the fire training center is surrounded by industrial uses and includes a bus parking and maintenance yard, manufacturing facilities, and self-storage facilities. The location within El Corazon is currently used as a temporary construction vehicle storage yard and consists of disturbed habitat. The project before you tonight includes a development plan and conditional use permit for each of the equipment hut locations. The development plan for each equipment hut represents a request to allow the construction of an unmanned telecommunications facility and emergency generator. The photo on this slide shows a typical equipment hut utilized by Sci-Fi. Each hut would be approximately 300 square feet and would be located on a concrete pad. The huts would be a maximum height of 10 feet 6 inches and are designed so as to not have a negative visual impact to the adjacent properties. Pursuant to the city zoning ordinance, a conditional use permit is also required to allow the operation of each telecommunications facility. Due to its proximity to a primary entrance point into El Corazon, extensive native landscaping is proposed along the perimeter of the lease area of the El Corazon location. This would help screen the facility from the public. Additionally, the facility will have black wrought iron fencing and will be painted a shade of green to help it blend into the natural surroundings of El Corazon. The photo on the bottom right is a rendering of the proposed landscaping at this location. As detailed in the staff report, the project was reviewed for compliance with the city's general plan, the El Corazon-specific plan, and the zoning ordinance. The project will provide improved internet connectivity to Oceanside residents, businesses, and city facilities, thereby complying with the city's land use element policy for meeting future communication needs of the city. Staff evaluated additionally the project of telecommunications facility is allowed at both locations with the approval of a conditional use permit. Staff evaluated the project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and found that each equipment hut qualifies for a Class III exemption since the project involves the construction and installation of small new equipment facilities. Due to the potential for adverse impacts to sensitive biological resources, a biological report was prepared for the El Corazon site. The report indicated that all project-related impacts would be less than significant, and the project qualifies for a Class III exemption. This report was appended to the staff report for your reference. A notice of application sign was placed at both project locations, and notices were mailed out to all property owners within a 1,500-foot radius and tenants within a 100-foot radius from both project locations. The project team held a community outreach meeting on August 12th. There was one member of the public in attendance at that meeting. Staff has received no other correspondence on the project. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the planning commission confirm issuance of a Class III CEQA exemption and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2024 P12 to approve the development plan and conditional use permit for the Sci-Fi equipment hut located at the fire training center, and confirm issuance of a Class III CEQA exemption and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2024 P13 to approve the development plan and CUP for the Sci-Fi equipment hut. That concludes my presentation. We have members of the Sci-Fi team here should you have any questions for them, and I'm also available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dodds.
I do have one question. With the hut that's going to be placed at the fire training center, does this inhibit the fire department from properly training in any way?
Commissioner Dodds, planning commissioners, no. The location of the hut is at the rear of the fire training center, and it should not impair any type of operations. The fire department is aware of the plans to move forward with this location.
Commissioner Ogden, do you have a question?
Yes, I do have a question. The location in the El Corazon entrance. Anyway, the question that I have is why is the hut going specifically where it is, close to Oceanside Boulevard? Could it be located further north? Is there any parking going to be in there? Why would it be? I don't believe that the entrance, the southwest entrance of El Corazon, has been designed yet, but why is it there? Why wouldn't it be moved to the north?
Commissioner Ogden, commissioners, I'm going to refer to the Sci-Fi applicant to answer that question.
Sure. So would you like to come up and introduce yourself? And did you understand the question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Jordan Harris from Sci-Fi Networks. I'm an area manager looking after the Oceanside project. So the reason that it's located where it is and that we, when it was first brought up, was potentially relocating it due to the project that's come down the line, we looked at it and we can't, is due to the power. So we've really struggled to find three-phase power to serve this hut in multiple locations across the city that we looked at. Three phases really hard to get. We're actually taking a supply from the other side of the street, and then we are, Sci-Fi Networks are extending that, but we have limitations on how far we can take it. The current location is the maximum that we can take the power to. If we were to go for a brand-new redesign and move it even 50 feet further away, SDG and E have said that could take up to two years with planning and bringing in a brand-new infrastructure, so it's not something that's feasible.
So question, could it be across the street? Do you say it's running across on the other side of the street?
Yeah, there's a pole on the other side of the street which we're taking power from, and then we're extending to the opposite side of the street.
I think the question is that since that's the entry into one of the accesses to, you know, Front Wave Arena, wouldn't it be better to be on the other side?
Commissioner, let me provide a clarification. It's not anywhere near Front Wave Arena. It's generally at the corner of El Camino Real and Oceanside Boulevard, a little further east of that side.
I thought it was on Town Center and...
It is on Town Center.
It's where the alternative high school is and the temporary, the shelter.
Yeah, so where the sign was up that I went and looked at today was right, you know, at the entranceway, you know, the trucks go in for the refuse, and I thought that's where it was going.
So yeah, that's not anywhere near Front Wave Arena.
I think that's what you were thinking then, wasn't it?
It's not there?
No.
It's at the kind of unimproved entry where it provides you access to the Green Waste Facility and to Moody's. There's a service road there that's not highly trafficked by regular traffic. It's only folks dropping off and picking up materials at the recycling facility and dropping off materials at Moody's.
So at some point in time, the redesign will design an entrance in the southwest portion of El Corazon.
Ultimately, there will be a...
Will not be near this area.
It will be near this area, but that all those, I mean, right now it's just a conceptual plan within a specific plan that alignment can alter. You know, it hasn't been fully designed by any means.
I think the concern would be if you're going to have a bike trail and you're going to have a driveway there, this looks like this may be in the center of that, but what you're saying is that that will not be the case?
That will not be the case, no.
Right, thank you.
You could design around that.
Are there any other questions for the applicant before we check on if we have any speakers tonight? Mary Sue?
Yes, we have four speakers this evening. Would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Please come forward, and you'll see your name upon the screen. And you have three minutes to speak. State your name and come to the lectern, and you'll be timed. Thank you.
My name's Raymond Whitwer. Our family owns the property on Oceanside Boulevard, right at the corner of Garrison. It's just literally west of what you guys are talking about, like the next intersection or two. On our property, we have a tenant that has a daycare center that is for infants and small children, and then also on the property, we have a significantly sized church that also has small... My question is, but I have some of the answers from just your presentation, so I appreciate that. With respect to, say, generators, I heard the word generators, is a question like, is that going to be an extra loud noise? There's a common news stuff, news articles often that are talking about lithium batteries and how they catch on fire, and it appears if you're running the cables underground that have significant voltage, maybe then there's not a concern of electricity emissions that would affect population going to and from. And that's pretty much why I came to be here, to see if these concerns were addressed. Thank you very much.
Kevin Bach. Good evening, everyone. I have really not been involved with this project at all. I just saw it on the agenda, looked at the location of that, and then thought, how can we accommodate both things, right? We've got a park that's being developed. Long-term park development is important. You don't want to just throw a bunch of stuff down and then kind of replan because that really never happens, so let's go ahead and put in the appropriate entryway that needs to be there, which I think is in the specific plan, 64-foot wide two-lane with 12-foot pedestrian walk. Go ahead and put that in there, and then just move this hut, you will, over maybe 100 or so feet. I understand a lot about electrical systems and fiber optics. I work for Hewlett Packard. We install industrial equipment all the time. Moving this, yeah, will cost a little bit more money for a thicker wire, but that's not a really big deal to accommodate. So instead of having something where it goes in and then you replan it in a year or two when you're actually ready to put the roadway in, let's go ahead and move this box to a location that's central to where an existing parking lot already is for the trail. There's a trail parking lot right in that upper area where I've relocated the box. It allows much easier access for trucks to come in and out. You're not putting this thing right in the middle of a, it's almost like a toll booth. I mean, it's right where the traffic is and where the people are walking. Move it away from that. Now's the time to do it. So just a suggestion, have this be a win-win for everybody, not just a win-win for somebody and a loss for somebody else. Let's make it a win-win perfectly. So that's my suggestion. I think it isn't too much of a burden to move that thing over 100 feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Joan Bachmann, President, Friends of El Corazon. So what's here on the thing? I've never figured out how to work this. Can I get the camera? Taking up my time. Okay. So the specific plan is very important, and the vision for El Corazon is this big park. So whatever's there today doesn't really matter. What we're talking about now is the corner that is Habitat. This will be a respite for people and an escape from city life, as mentioned. And so we really need to be looking at that. That's what planning is about, what planning commissions are about, and so we really need to be planning. This is the other way we look at El Corazon Park. There's a little urban crescent moon there, then it's mostly rural fields and the civic uses, and then there's wild habitat on this end. So make no mistake, the vote tonight approves the entrance to the park. There are only four entrances. This is our 100-year park. This is Central Park. This is Balboa Park, and we're going to design an entrance tonight. So they said that'll happen later. We can move it. No, we can't. You can only go so far from the light at El Camino. There's other things happening. You can't run it up the berm into the Green Waste without a significant expense, so this is probably staying where it is. So I'm going to ask you for this, and I'm going to explain more later. The park entrance is at C Street. This is an exhibit from the specific plan. You should have had this. It shows two travel lanes. It shows a bioswale on either side of the road, and it shows a 16-foot multi-use trail, 12-foot unpaved and, or 12-foot paved and a 4-foot unpaved. This is on site. This is at 64 feet put on site, and you can't see him, but the little people are about the same size as the man in the photograph, and everybody recognizes him. There's the two cars, the 10-foot bioswale being generous for that. Another way to look at it, putting the bioswale on the one side, actually in the roadway, and biasing it completely to the other side, that little representation of the hut, which may not be 100% accurate, but it's right in the way of the multi-use trail. So I was a planning commissioner. There's only one way to guarantee things. We want a benefit for the users of the park, for the people of Oceanside, for our 100-year park. There must be a benefit. We understand the Wi-Fi benefit. Yay for that. However, we need a benefit for the park and for the park users. That's the mission of Friends of El Corazon. And you need to add... Suggestions don't work. They are not part of the record, and please add these conditions. Relocate the 16-foot wide multi-use trail with mitigation because it's going to end up in the Habitat Zone because the parks and rec is only C Street, and then design and install native plant landscaping for both sides. We've achieved partially one side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Diane Nygaard. I'm just one of many people in this community who's worked for years to preserve the vision for El Corazon, a park in the heart of Oceanside. I think all of us owe a debt of gratitude to Dixie Bales, who really started that vision a long, long time ago. El Corazon is primarily a park. It was planned for very limited commercial and residential development in very strictly-defined areas to create a revenue stream to support the park. The proposed location of the Sci-Fi hut is at one of the major entrances to a park. The specific plan was unanimously adopted by the City Council in 2009 after years of community planning. The area proposed for the hut is designated as Habitat or Park with room for road and multi-use trail, multimodal access so everybody can use the park. But instead of Habitat or a park, we're proposing to lease the land to a private for-profit fiber optics company. There, of course, are miles of fiber optics throughout the city, and the hut could have gone many places. Our city has already approved this lease. You really can't change that tonight, but you can take action to make sure that it doesn't get worse. Please express your opinion that these kind of private company leases are not compatible with the vision for the park, especially in this sensitive location. Let's not make, compound this mistake in the future. And direct staff to add a condition to ensure that continued planning for this entrance provides space for the multi-use trail that is essential to access the park. Take those actions tonight, and the community's vision for this park can move forward, and future generations will thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Morrissey, that concludes our pre-registered slips.
Thank you. Any comments? Yes. Commissioner Balma.
Interesting. Like, did it even, like, it seems like the El Corazon specific plan has specific dimensions and such, 60, was it 64 feet, I think, the total width of the... Why didn't that come up when this was placed?
Commissioner Balma, members of the planning commission, so the specific plan does have very specific cross-sections for the different roads proposed for circulation within the park. Nothing that we're doing tonight is going to affect ability to have that cross-section built as per the standard. Right now, the location of C Street is just a concept on a very large, high-level concept plan for the specific plan. They're not in details. That land isn't subdivided. Roadway alignments haven't been fully defined. There's no, nothing that we're doing tonight would prohibit that full cross-section from being developed as designed. It might require that the entrance shift to the east maybe 20 feet, 15 feet. It's to be determined at this point. So right now, we're, nothing that's being proposed would prohibit that from happening in the future.
That's kind of what I was looking at when I was looking at the diagrams they showed. Why can't it just shift a little bit to the east and still have 64 feet for the whole, what's planned for the El Corazon? I didn't see anything problem with that either. Okay, thank you. And as far as three-phase power, I know that's very valuable and very, it doesn't happen everywhere. So you have searched for three-phase power. That's one of the specific sites that has it, as you said, and that you can only take it so far because that's just the way it works, and I understand that a little bit, but... Yeah. If you want to just kind of explain that a little bit more.
Even the, yeah, even the location you brought up to is that was something we looked at with SDG and E, but we're already at the limit of how far we can take that power supply without doing a brand-new design and then then building a new infrastructure to get to the hut, and that could take 12 months to two years just for the design piece, which is something we can't do with our project. We're looking to go live before the end of this year. Yeah, we've already done the geotechnical surveys and designs and power designs, and we're at our limits already.
Could you speak in the microphone? Because we can't hear you, and so go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm saying we've already looked at other options of relocating the hut, and it comes down to the location we have now. Although we've done all the surveys, we've already produced all the designs. We're ready to build. Power is one of the biggest issues, and we're at the limit of where we can already be.
Okay. Any other comment? Yeah, Commissioner Rosales.
I think Louise asked a question I was thinking about, and kind of, I had kind of the same answer in my head already as to how Sergio answered. So I mean, conceptually, the entrance is in the specific plan and the specs as they are, and so when it gets designed for real, it's not just concept anymore, is when it offers the opportunity to be shifted to another location so it does, so this, what we're being asked to approve tonight, doesn't interfere with that completely different use. So adding a condition tonight to, as suggested, to make sure that is included is getting a little bit ahead of the design of the actual entrance when that comes forward. So in terms of the applicant and the ability to bring in three phases and the additional costs and the possibility that it would take another 12 to 24 months to locate it otherwise, again, we're back to, well, conceptually, the entrance can still be what it needs to be down the road when it gets designed. So all of that means I support this idea in this, in this project.
The other request was made that why don't you landscape both sides? Well, that would be kind of like hard to do when you know you're going to be shifting the whole roadway, 64 feet or whatever the amount of distance is going to be. How could you landscape that? That's just not graded or anything, so I can understand why that would be feasible right now to add that on to your proposal. So I would probably not, even though I think that's a good idea, but then when, once you get the whole picture, it's kind of like, huh, it doesn't really work, so.
Any other comments from the commission?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation to confirm issuance, category exemption for CEQA, that we adopt Resolution 2024 P12, and 2024 P13 with the findings and conditions.
I would second that, and I would also commend Joan and her group for what they've done. They've added some, a great entrance for this, for El Corazon, right? They've added some, a great entrance for this, for El Corazon right now. So thanks for all your hard work on that. I know it's not everything you want, but that's what compromise is all about in this world of America.
Okay, let's vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes 5-1 with Commissioner Ogden voting no.
I see there's no discussion items. Do we want to review the Planning Commission 2025 meeting calendar?
That's correct, Chairman Morrisey. There was an item included in your agenda pack, item number five, that outlines the proposed meeting schedule for the 2025 calendar year. And so if the Planning Commission finds it reasonable, we'd ask that you provide us the nod that this is acceptable. It has this, for way of background, we keep, the Planning Division keeps one calendar for the three boards that we're responsible for in Planning Commission. It's the second one to vote on next year's calendar.
Commissioner, or Chair, are you looking for, yeah, are you looking for, are we looking for a motion to approve? Knowing that our schedule does shift, this is just, again, back to theoretically, this is what it might look like in 2025, so...
I think probably, does anybody have an issue with this? Not, you have the nod.
Yeah.
So does anybody have an issue with this?
No.
Okay.
We're all nodding.
We're nodding. Okay.
I think that's good. Thank you.
You're welcome. So I guess we're at two, the City Planners' Commissioners' reports. I'll go first. I think, did we get confirmation that Commissioner Ogden was approved by City Council to be the new DAC representative?
Yes, we did get confirmation, I believe, at the last council meeting. That was an affirmative appointment to the Downtown Advisory Committee.
Congratulations, Mr. Ogden. That's all I had. Vice Chair Malik's absent. Commissioner Rosales.
I do not have anything. Thank you.
Commissioner Bauma.
Interesting topic that came up across my computer today. I guess we're starting a whole, you know, our general plan is hopefully going to come to a vote in October, we hope, the general plan, with the way that you guys have worked on it hard. I hope that's kind of still coming, right? And then with, oh, it sounds like Sergio might have a little caveat. Go ahead, Sergio. How's it coming?
I appreciate that starter. So we spent the summer, the draft environmental impact report was circulated for public review throughout the summer, start beginning in June and ending in August. At the same time, the draft elements were also out for public review and comment, and we received a host of comments from various sources on both the EIR and the general plan elements themselves. So it requires us to go back and do some more work, more specifically, the most work is required on the vital and sustainable resource element. And so we're actually taking an item to the next, not this Wednesday's council meeting, but to the following council meeting, to amend the project budget to account for some work that wasn't originally anticipated. And those have kind of resulted from the comments that we received. So we have to increase the budget a little bit. All that being said, the timeline for the project's going to be drawn out a little bit longer than we anticipated. Depending on the amount of work that needs to be done, there's a possibility that the EIR might need to be recirculated. So that takes a little bit of time and effort. And so we're still analyzing those comments. We're formulating a plan to move the project forward, and we'll have more to report once we have the ability to assess everything. So that's kind of where we're at today. It's not going to be coming forward to this body in October for sure.
So it doesn't sound like it's even going to make it in the 2024 timeline.
I don't believe it's going to be to the decision-maker, any decision-making body in 2024.
Well, I guess that's kind of, then it pushes, I know, like, as you guys all know, I live in Southmore Hills, our farming district, Southmore Hills. And we've been working, I think I started working on it in 2013 with the farmers out there to try to figure out a way to save our farmland, which now I get a letter from people that are, save our farmland, that aren't farmers. We've been trying for years to figure out ways to have the farmers preserve as much as they can of the farmland to be farmland, whether it's going to be the farming that we see today, commercial farming, or whether it's more of an agritourism kind of farming, like you see at Monzerot Winery in Fallbrook. Like, whatever we can get, we just don't want to see it blanketed with what happened with North River Farms, which was houses. And we've been trying for years to get this plan done. And so we're hoping to get the plan, because if we have a plan that actually, I always call it, I always say it holds water, which is economically feasible, that if someone wanted to develop their land, they could actually do it within the constraints that a city gives them for their infrastructure. Or else they go to something called Chapter 17 of the zoning code, which is plan development, which is what happened with North River Farms, because you have to allow people to be able to build on their land, right? So if they can't build on their land because it doesn't come pencil out, then they can do a plan development, and it goes into another level, and then we get tons of houses. So we're trying to get this thing done, where we hope, we thought, in the first part of 2025, to have that, because there's things that are changing out there in Southmore Hills. We have a new landowner. And with all of his intentions right now, we've been meeting with him, he's very much into agricultural preservation. We hope that stays that way, but you never know what happens with people when you go down the road another five years or whatever happens. I mean, ourselves in farming, we went, we moved there in the 90s, and we were doing great with farming, with farming avocados, but now it pretty much doesn't even break even anymore. Now we're having to pay to grow avocados. And you've all heard all the stories, water, labor. But another huge one is the importing of Mexican and Guatemalan, all the fruit that comes across the border is run by the cartels, and they do whatever they want to do to bring it across the border, and we are suffering. I mean, California avocados is like a dying, you know, fruit. I mean, we're still doing it, but many of our neighbors have turned off the water on their trees. So anyway, I would just bring, I don't know why I brought, I brought this up, because I just got this, and I want you to be aware that we're going to start working on more public awareness about, you know, save our farmland. It is our farmland, and that's why we move there, but it's also owned by farmers and big landowners, and so that's their farmland. We just like to see it and love it, and we don't want it to ever go away. But how can we work together? That's what I've been trying to do since 2013. Anyway, that's my little soapbox.
You're going to stay on this commission a little bit longer.
Might have to.
Commissioner Dodd.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Anthony. Commissioner Ogden.
Oh, there it is. Maybe just, sorry, it's just me. Sorry about that. Disregard that last five minutes.
Let's do this all over again. Commissioner Ogden.
No comment. Thank you. Nothing.
Oh, my goodness. City Planner.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to bring the Planning Commission up to date on some of the things that the Planning Division's been working on. So as far as meetings go, it's been a little, this has been a unique time for me in my 10 years here at the city. Haven't seen so many planning commissions have to be canceled for lack of items moving forward. And it would give the impression that we're not busy in the Planning Division, but we're extremely busy. It's the complete opposite. But with respect to upcoming meetings, currently, we don't have any items scheduled for the meetings of September 23rd or October 14th. So those are likely to be canceled. We do have tentatively scheduled a meeting on October 28th. It's for a mixed-use project located at 503 Vista Bella. It consists of 77 dwelling units and approximately 1,000 square feet of commercial space and four live-work units and a six-story building configuration. Currently, the site's developed with a two-story office building, so they're proposing a redevelopment of that site. There's been a lot of public interest, as you might imagine, in the Oceana community about this project. So it could be a very spirited meeting that evening. So I would recommend coming prepared. Maybe we'll bring some snacks in case we need to take a recess or something. It's going to be a long night, I have a feeling.
What date is that again?
October 28th. It's tentatively scheduled for. We're still working through one final item with the SEQA process on that project. If we get the right documentation, then we'll be bringing it forward at that meeting. So that's really what we have for upcoming Planning Commission items and Planning Commission meetings. Moving on to City Council, right now, we only have one item tentatively scheduled for October 9th, and that is the appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of a variance and regular coastal permit for a property in the 1800 block of South Pacific Street. That item was actually scheduled in August. The applicant requested a 60-day continuance, and they recently, as last week, requested another continuance. So we're not sure if it's going to be on the October 9th meeting or not. It's likely going to be pushed to the beginning of next year. Sure. It was a property owner built a deck without a regular coastal permit and without a building permit. Unfortunately, exceeded the lot coverage of the site, and it really was very difficult for us to make findings to support that variance request. So that's all we have on the books right now for City Council. However, that's not all we're working on. It's like, I came up with a brief list of projects that unfortunately wouldn't come to this body, but there's certainly projects that are moving forward and are requiring a lot of staff resources. We have a couple 100% affordable housing projects that the Planning Division's currently working on. One is located at 1111 South Coast Highway. It's for a 56-unit affordable, 100% affordable housing project. Because of the nature of the project and its location in a commercial corridor, it's subject to a ministerial review, meaning it doesn't, it's not even administrative in nature. It's ministerial. It's like almost processing a building permit. It's still an entitlement, but under AB 2011, we're required to process those types of applications ministerially, and it's not subject to SEQA because of the ministerial nature of the review. Another similar project, 100% affordable project we're currently working on, as a matter of fact, we have a developers' conference this week. It's for a 111-unit affordable housing project located at 2136 El Camino Drive. So that's, both those projects have tentatively been awarded city funding, so the city will be participating in both those projects with some gap funding. They're getting other funding from other resources, but those are two to look forward to. And then we have a host of projects that we're working on in the downtown, and we can just go right up Mission Avenue. Starting at 901 Mission Avenue, we're working on a project that's a mixed-use project. This is right across the street from the high school. A mixed-use project consists of 272 residential units and approximately 4,000 square feet of commercial space in an eight-story configuration, so pretty significant. Another, right across the street from this, at 801 Mission, we're working on a project that's, mixed-use project that consists of 230 units and approximately 5,500 square feet of commercial. Continuing the trend of going up, Mission Avenue, we're still continuing to work on the redevelopment of the Regal Cinema Site at 401 Mission Avenue that consists of 332 units and 20,000 square feet of commercial space. Other projects that we're working on in the downtown include blocks 5 and 20 on either side of Pier V Way, just west of the railroad tracks. Those projects combined consist of 373 units and approximately 6,000 square feet of commercial space. And then a little further north on Coast Highway, 1103 North Coast Highway, we're working on a project at the existing roadway in-site. It's 290 units and approximately 3,000 square feet of commercial space. So that gives you a little idea of the projects, the scale of the projects that we're working on. A lot of the development right now is focused in the downtown. I think that as a result of the City Council removing the density cap for mixed-use projects in downtown district, we're still working on that project, too. They also directed us to reinstate a density cap. And so right now, we're actually supposed to have that item heard by the Coastal Commission, the portions of the downtown district that are in the coastal zone, that new density cap of 860 use an acre isn't effective yet until, it requires Coastal Commission certification. We're supposed to be on the agenda this week, at this week's meeting, but at the last minute, they pulled, they pulled it off the agenda over concerns about having a density cap. So they fought us to remove the density cap, and now they're fighting us to add a density cap. It's kind of an interesting situation. So that's a brief overview of some of the projects that we're working on. Unfortunately, it won't come to this body, but certainly taken up a fair amount of Planning Division resources. I'm happy to answer any questions on any of that.
What's happening with the development at the North County Transit District area?
Yeah, that's a great question, and thank you for bringing that one up. Actually, last week, the EIR for that project started the public review period. The Division mailed out notice of availability for that project. So the EIR is out on the street for public comment. Once we receive, you know, the public review period closes and we assess what the extent of the comments received will drive the schedule for that project. So it's still moving forward, but they had a number of stormwater issues to work out. The original stormwater design wasn't acceptable. They really had to go back to the drawing board and figure the stormwater out, and they have. And so now we're moving it forward. It's preliminary in concept that's been approved, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? This meeting is now adjourned.